Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, please watch over this council and then make decisions over this town and the surrounding areas. Please continue to watch over the employees and the police department as they go about their daily duties that are required in their jobs. Please watch over the citizens and keep them safe and healthy. Lord, please guide all who are in attendance home safely. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any add-on to the agenda? Any add-on? Okay. Uh, approval of amendments. You got one, Robert?
The policy and procedure manual. Do you want to postpone that till you have a chance to talk to Mr. Wilber?
Uh, yeah, but Amanda has got something she wants to say about it. But if it's okay anything right now, let's just wait till we get to Mr. Wilber.
Approval of amendments that were presented for the regular scheduled meeting on March ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Have a motion for that?
Motion made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval of financial statement, preparing actual conversion budget for March two thousand and eighteen. Have a motion for them?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, the mayor's comments, as probably most of you know, that live on Cooper Street, uh, we have a major undertaking here. Uh, I'm not going to go back and try to, uh, repair that, temporary repair, because it's going to happen again. I knew that when we did it the first time. But you have to do what you do, have to work with us to do what you can do. Uh, we're signed off on payment right now. Uh, maybe in a month or so, they're going to be getting some money back. Uh, it's going to be a major undertaking for the widening of that road, for putting in coves, for rerouting the gas lines. There's just a lot to be done over there. But it is in the works and just be patient with us and we're going to accomplish it. Fix the Cooper Street. April eleventh, whoever would like to come down here for pinwheel, uh, they'll be back here at ten o'clock and we'll build a police station. They take a picture here and that's for a best child abuse, isn't it?
I think so.
Child abuse program?
It is.
Huh?
It is.
Okay. Last April, I'll be this Wednesday at ten o'clock. This month is spare housing month for month of April. Uh, this month also National Community Development Week, April the second through the sixth, which is already over with, but that was National Community Development Week. April the eighth through the fourteenth is National Library Week. Uh, they'll be having couple kids by eighteenth at four thirty at the Methodist Church. It's a great program for young people. Uh, we're back on schedule. We met with a lawyer, uh, Friday, uh, for an examination. Uh, I think, uh, within maybe three or four months, we're going to be able to get our city limit sign moved, uh, get it moved. So that'll be a big plus for the town. Uh, Mr. Wilber, he had other things come up this evening. Uh, I want to recognize Mr. Carl Blackman. He was, uh, here Friday, a week ago, spent the night, we were on Pine Tree. We had a major issue with the sewer line. I had called the Ritter, uh, come out and run a judge through the line. Uh, I called Mr. Blackman. He came to work from, I think, ten o'clock through to five o'clock that morning. Uh, I really appreciate what you've done for us. That's about all I have under mayor's comments. Now we'll move on to old business and, uh, Maryville Police Department, policy and procedure and things. Uh, do you want to address that or what?
No, we want both, fine, until we give him.
You want to take that till next meeting? I have a motion for that?
Motion made.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll introduce this is here. We had knew this when Mr. Josh was, uh, Foster, he's sitting right back in the back. He's, uh, Assistant Chief of Police Department for the town mayor of Hill. Uh, I'm gonna pay the motion to accept him Assistant Chief of Police for town mayor of Hill.
Motion made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next one's Mr. Corner, uh, Maryville Police Department. I'll turn that over to Mr. Corner.
Okay. I'm only going to take a few minutes of y'all's time. However, I'm going to stand up and do it. So, I just wanted everybody to be aware of the changes that's been happening over there. So, maybe we can get these gentlemen in a better life. So, we just approved our Assistant Chief. Let me tell you what he's done so far. Policy and procedure book is up to date. It goes with the sheriff's departments, um, the River City PD, you know, anytime that he's worked in, like in Atlanta where he came from, they did a policy and procedure book. It was mirrored after the departments that were around him. So, that policy and procedure book, maybe lengthy, may have a couple of things that probably need to be taken out, like the fit-for-duty stuff. However, it does have everything that they'll need to run that department correctly and everything is up to date. Um, he's updated all of the paperwork. Any logs that they have over there, he looked at, saw that some of them were out of date. He made it. He updated them. He corrected. The boys, when they write tickets, or wait a minute, I know there's a couple over there. When they write tickets, they're required to log every single ticket they write. They're held accountable for every one of those tickets. When they get a ticket booked, they gotta sign it out. If they're missing a ticket, they're held accountable for it. Everyone of the police cars are cleaned, they're washed, vacuumed out, taken care of. There's no trash. They sign out their vehicles. Something's wrong, something's dated, something's broken, they're held accountable for it. I actually went over there to visit Mr. Foster and I've never seen anybody do this before and I thought, man, that was a great idea. They all wear body cams. Anytime that they go on a traffic stop, that body cam goes on. He's watching the videos of every one of their officers at these stops. He's taking notes. The good points, the bad points, what you need to work on, and they sit down and they discuss it. And I thought that was just absolutely an excellent idea. Who better is going to make you better than to watch the video together, talk about these points, and get better from the whole traffic stop? You know, did you do this wrong? Did you approach the vehicle wrong? There's a safety issue here. All of those things he was writing down and they were discussing together. The overview of what they've done in the shift, there's a log over there telling you what the officer's done throughout that shift, what kind of tickets they wrote, if there was an arrest. All of that stuff is right there for the chief to view when he gets there. He gets it on his desk in the mornings or in his box on the outside. Um, all of the training that they're required to do through the state, they have a board over there. Everything is written on that board, when it's due, when they have to complete it. Everything's taken care of. If they don't complete it, he takes care of it. They're held accountable for that. He holds every one of those officers accountable for everything that needs to be done. Um, files. He went through all of the old files. He went through all of the old reports that he has. He filed them away. He kept it. You know, you can go in there right now and ask for something. A P.O. from the police department for gas that they did last Thursday, he'll give it to you because it's in there. He refiled everything. All employee files are up to date. All of the older employee files are up to date in the back. Um, if you have a question about if they went to training or not, he can tell you. He also reminds them when that training is due, when it has to be completed. There's, there's no question about it, they need it done or he takes care of it. They're held accountable. Warrants now has been installed. In the past, if they needed a warrant signed, they got a vehicle, they drove to the Ritter, they dropped off the warrant, they come back, they waited, they went back to the Ritter to pick up the warrant, they came back to serve the warrant. Now that they have an internet-based information, they can type that warrant and all they have to do is wait for the judge to send it back. No more gas is spent going back and forth for them to get those warrants signed. So that's a money saver right there for me, as you know, it takes some gas going back and forth. Um, a lot of updates and training was provided to all of the officers. There is, if you look at the policies and procedures, I know it looks like it's a big amount. However, there is an administration, policies and procedures for your supervisors, and then there's a police procedure for all of your lower ranking individuals. So that's why it's lengthy, because you have to have those two parts. You have to have somebody, your policies for your lower people to be held accountable for, and your supervisors need to be held accountable for some of their actions as well. Um, but I just wanted to let y'all know, all of the stuff that has been updated over there since he came in January, it's like a completely different department. When they write the reports, the DA, Jimmy Lestage, as you even mentioned, I see a difference already. So I just wanted all of y'all to know the positive changes that are happening over there. And Josh Foster has made those changes along with those, those men over there and the chief. They've worked and it's been excellent. So I just wanted y'all to know what's been going on over there.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Mr. Dale Reinhardt on the bench. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reinhardt.
Uh, last meeting, the council gave me, uh, the authority to deal with Division Street and I got a hold of the parish. And since then, we have graded Division Street. We brought material into, we're talking about the dirt part, from the end of the pavement to where you go to the pavement over by the school. We filled in those holes. They brought in material, filled in those holes, made them solid where they won't keep kicking out, kicking out. It has been gravelled on the park, has not, did not have gravelled before, and we have installed thirty mile an hour speed limit signs. I went over there before, uh, well, two months ago and watched the number of traffic that on the school day uses that road. A lot of people use that road to get to school and it keeps them out of town. And so it's a, it's a good deal going. Uh, the mayor's maybe got us some material lined up within a year when they start working on, uh, the one ninety, right?
Yes.
When they start working on one ninety, he's acquired, uh, we'll take anything, you know, the shavings from the, from the asphalt and we'll be able to use that as a top surface. So we'll have an actual, actual street where every time it rains, it's not shut down and everything. So that's, that's looking good. Now we'll find another street and see what we can do with it. So thank you.
Thank you, Reinhardt. Uh, next we'll move to that motion. All right. Next on our agenda, uh, the water and sewer rates. I know this is, uh, a lot of people say this is a retirement town. A lot of people still work here in this town. Uh, we have the lowest utility rates of anywhere that I know of. I have sulfur, uh, even, sulfur does not even have water meters. That was a shock to me about that. They're twenty dollars a month strictly for their water. Uh, district by, that's three eighty-nine, they're eighteen fifty for the first three thousand gallons, so much per thousand after that. Uh, the Ritter, just their water is out there, you can't even water for it to water your yard in the winter time. Uh, Quincy is basically about the same situation. I'm gonna leave this up to the board for discussion, but I am proposing a fifty cent increase for the water and a fifty cent increase for the sewer. I'm gonna leave this up to the board's decision.
Uh, checking with the, the water department and just off at the top of their head, uh, a lot of this is brought about because of materials. Water balance, within about the last two years, gone up about thirty-five to forty percent on the cost of what they work. It's a, we're not, it's not a get-rich-deal, it's just to keep your head above water. I would say I've lived in other communities and everything and I know what it is, and this is about, about half of what a lot of communities pay. So it's a, it's not, we're trying to, it's not council or town's trying to make any money, they're just trying to keep it down where we can afford it to operate and do the maintenance that's necessary and needs to be done. That's all I'm.
I agree with that because I feel like we don't take care of what we have and we have to think about the future of, you know, materials and costs of that, you know, because nothing's cheap anymore, you know, and it's just getting worse. People don't get pay rates, just things like that, but I feel like fifty cents is not that bad compared, because I have compared the rates in other jails too, and most you, they're on meter. You know, you pay by your usage on water, so I feel like we're fortunate to be able and still not have to have meter water. So I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
What's the current water rate now, just?
Seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty. And I could bring it up to eighteen.
And silver seventeen fifty.
So we're, both of them like eighteen?
Well, and the trash added to that is part of overseas, part of that. And I will also mention that the town sars close to six dollars per household per month to try to pick up. The town sars that. So you're not ready to charge the full amount. Uh, I think it's thirteen dollars and, get me out on that.
It's thirteen or fourteen.
Thirteen to fourteen dollars per household and well, we collect like seven dollars per household. So that's, that's a good deal.
And I, I have probably, and I have practiced the number time and time again, and we are, and, and, and I, even, even actually in great sweep, we will still not be making nearly what it costs us. So, so, so I, I make a motion that we, that we go do upon, on the water and sewer rate by fifty cents.
And that'll be a dollar increase per month.
When would it be effective?
Well, we'll have to have a open meeting next, uh, May and walk toward the legislature. Am I correct? June, this year. I've had a motion and I'll have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take motion back. Okay. Also under our community center area and our pavilion, uh, right now it's a hundred and twenty dollars per day.
It's a hundred and twenty for the first day and twenty dollars for the after.
So, so that's just for the first day. If you get, if you want the day before and the day after is twenty dollars for each day, adding to the hundred and twenty dollars. So if you want three days, a hundred and sixty dollars. If you want one day, it's a hundred and twenty dollars. If you want two days, a hundred and forty dollars. I'm proposing, and also they get back fifty dollars. So you pay a hundred and twenty, you get fifty back. That's seventy dollars for you to commit to. We have Ms. Laurie, uh, that does the cleaning down there. The town pays her. Uh, we try to stay on top of that down there for our cleaning and also for our utilities, uh, electricity mostly. Uh, we had installed a winter, a winter, a window unit a couple of years ago, which has really helped that place down there. And when you run blasters like the one is and several units, uh, it, you know, it costs money for it to get to. And we don't want anybody to go down there and it's not comfortable for them. It's a nice facility, bathrooms, kitchen, ice maker, plenty of tables, plenty of chairs. So what I'm proposing, asking from the board, is go to one hundred and thirty dollars per day with that twenty dollars before and a twenty dollars after, and they only get back forty dollars for that hundred and thirty. So it's costing ninety dollars for, just to rent it for one day. Any discussion on that?
Have we had any problems with, um, anything being damaged?
Yes, we have, yes, yes.
And was, did that cover those costs for damage or did it not? That's my question too.
Well, there wasn't, uh, there was damages that were handled, the workers were able to fix. I mean, it was not completed. A basin tore out, there was a door that tore up, you know, they put it back together, uh, stuff like that.
My, I guess my question would be, you feel like that is enough for damages are done, or should we set something saying, if damage is made, then this is how much you're gonna?
Well, I'm gonna leave that up to the board to know what higher y'all want to do with that, but the only thing I'm proposing is go up ten dollars on the, the one-day occupancy and they only refund it forty dollars. So that then, um, getting back seventy dollars, that would be, you know, we'd get a little bit more out of, maybe twenty dollars per round on day. And that's same as, for, for the price is same for the community center and the pavilion.
It would still be twenty dollars though at like thirty, a hundred and thirty for a day and twenty after.
Right, right, right. We'll leave that twenty alone if they want it for one day or three days. It would be a hundred and thirty for one day. If you want a day before or a day after, there'll be another twenty at your house.
And the extra money that the town would be getting from that would be to maintain the light, its water?
Yes, yes, yes. And if we have a, uh, clients go out down there, you know, or something other, that's a couple of costs that do.
Jennifer, as, as, as the D. agenda just said, community, community center rate, rent, and do we, I actually would, should we amend that, 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 that should include the pavilion and also?
I missed you there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, I make a motion that we do that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're down to public participation now. We're ready for your questions, comments.
I'll wait for you.
Oh, rate change?
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion on the rate change then.
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we're down to public participation. Your current topic.
I'm more excited.
Whoa.
With this, with the pavilion and with the community center, you don't think you should take a refundable donation from them? If they don't tear it up, they get that back, but if they tear up the doors and they take the?
We monitor that pretty closely, you know, who's, uh?
Just think who they got back.
Want to use it, you know, we have, Fred apparently goes down there on Mondays and, you know, he'll check out everything. If a problem like that comes up, we'll address that issue. Go ahead.
Now, the pavilion is going to be rented for the same amount?
Yes, yes, yes.
Even though there's not appliances or anything in the pavilion?
Same price.
And they will have to furnish everything?
What do you mean furnish everything?
If they need, uh?
If they need?
A grill or they're cooking?
They need ice, you know, if they're doing something at the pavilion, we're more welcome to get it for them. You know, they bring their ice to us, we have ice machine, we'll, we'll fix them up with ice. The tables are there, the chairs are there, water's there, you know, restroom is there. And of course, you understand, it's not air-conditioned though.
That's what I mean. I mean, it's open. There's no, as much bills with the pavilion as it is with the community.
But we've had a lot of, uh, mysterious things done.
Definitely.
At the pavilion, more than we have at the community center. There have been doors kicked in, I don't know how many times we've changed the locks down there, holes knocked in the walls in the restroom down there, you know, that's caused money to fix. So if I had to set them, we just take them down because kids are chopping, pulling the blades down, they broke, they're all down, there's none, none down there right now, seven of them. We have fans that they want to use fans for the pavilion. We'll cooperate well anyway we can, but I still feel like it should be the same price because destruction that goes on, it's more at the pavilion than it is at the community center.
Um, I know when I rented it, it's been a while back, when we rented it for the wedding, it got so hot, it was horrible. You said y'all didn't put up, but just to make sure they're renting it for this much in the summer, I mean, we couldn't even, we just pretty much packed up and left because it got so hot. Now, we did have a lot of people in there, but, you know, and we cleaned it before we got in there because it was not clean. And hopefully, like I say, that's been a couple of years, just, you're renting for that much, when somebody walks in there, they shouldn't have to bring the cleaning supplies before they can?
No, they shouldn't.
And we did. And, and I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that's been a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
You're raising it.
Well, I think a couple of years ago, you're talking about a winter unit that's been installed.
Yeah.
And that definitely helps that building down there in the summertime. Now, I think I remember the time you were talking about.
Yeah. Um, and also I had a question, where would you refer to moving the city limit signs to?
Mr. Myers is logging, uh, company.
Yeah.
Just, he's got a fence right on the north side of our fence, right on the north side of his business there. That's where we're proposing to move it to.
That, I think that's a great idea. A lot of people.
Because, uh, he buys high-dollar equipment.
Yeah.
The town would recover some sales tax now that.
Include that.
He doesn't have a problem with it.
Well, a lot of people were asking during the election about why our city limits weren't further out because they, they use variable water and get the things that could be both. And so, but you could also get the tax dollars off of it. So not, you're not thinking of extending it any other area?
Not yet for the present time.
That auction place is not going to be in danger?
Don't have.
But, but that, that particular extension regarding the city limits, like, has been underway for a long, long time.
Every meeting. What's, why is it, I mean, why, what's the order of it? What's the math?
Uh, when, when the first time the paperwork, we, we was not filed correctly, as, and that, and that promoted a long delay.
Yeah.
And, and, and then, and then, and then when, and then when, and then when, when we finally got back to it, I, we, we had, we had to send out letters to every council and, and, to, to know, to know if, if anybody had a problem with it. It's a, oh, Lord.
So that's been done?
That's been done.
Since I've been in it?
Well.
I mean, yes, we've had to, you know, Mr. Wilber tried to do a lot of different work. He's had to contact. I mean, yes, we've had to, you know, Mr. Welver times, did a lot of paperwork, he's had to contact, you know, back to you. You know how that is, getting them to call you back, so it's just been a long process.
Getting John to come back takes a while, it takes.
You have to stay on topic.
Like I said, you have to see him. We have to see him.
And I do, John, I love him, but he's just busy, you know. And if you can stay in contact with Missy or even Misty out there, you know, just make sure.
You have to send people that live within that district. And so far, I think we've had one person that I didn't want.
Well, we met, Mr. Reinhardt and myself met with Mr. Welver last Friday at his office. I think, I'll let Mr. Reinhardt comment on this. I think we have a better understanding. I already have all of the names of property owners that's involved in this. We'll, we'll have, we'll have to get, and we have petition letters we sent out. That has to come back. And that has to go to the tax assistance office, or the store's office. We'll have to have a meeting back down here on that. So I'm hoping we're gonna be good with our part of it, maybe three, four months, something like that. So sometime if you're, that will be happening, and you want to make comment, Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, one thing that changed is the original plan that was designed a long time ago, stated that it had to be the majority, or not the majority, had to be the total number of property owners have to agree. Well, that's not necessarily true, it has to be a majority. So, when we got that first negative letter, we thought, oh, where are you selling? But it's a majority. It's not the total number of property owners. And you're always, in any situation, you might worry too, that, think, they think they're suspicious, you know. But that's not true. So the game's changed a little bit, in our favor, as much in our favor. Very much.
And it's not only gonna be a, a, a plus for us, it's also a plus for the people that's gonna be annexed. Right now, there's a federal program that's going on, and it's been delayed, and, because they've had some legal technicalities involved. There's twelve homes on Gial, Gial Street and Goff Street that's been had in sewer. I think that'll be completed this year, get through with that. So, when the town has money to do things with, you can progress forward. If you do not have the revenue to do anything with, you're stagnated. So, this is just another step, and for the town to progress along and try to do some better things that's been done in the past. That's the way I see it. Any more questions, comments? If not, I'll let her take the motion to adjourn.
Motion?
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out.